I'd like to call to order the September 3, 2013, regular meeting of the Davie County Board of Education to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Chairman Fuller, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a business item, discussion and consideration of a Plan B option.
You need to cut your mic on.
Chairman Fuller, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include a business item regarding discussion and consideration for a Plan B option for A Davie High School.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we need to repeat that?
Only if Board members need to repeat it.
Everybody understand that? Okay, all in favor?
No discussion.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's have some discussion. I apologize. Who would like to discuss?
If it would ease your pain a little bit, I ran off some copies of some notes and things that I wanted to discuss regarding this issue. And I promise you, if you'll vote in favor of what I'm proposing, it'll go by real fast. If it needs some discussion, more than what I've got here, if you see, I think you'll see some validity to doing this. But I'm willing to offer some other information now or wait until it's approved to be in the agenda and then go over details at that time.
I would suggest that you go ahead and offer it now, before we vote.
Before we vote on adoption of the agenda or a vote for the...
I would say if you have any comments associated with changing the agenda that you talk about and anybody else have any comments associated with that can discuss that now.
Okay. Chad, I have this on paper and between you and Jill, you can answer this. Is it appropriate to pass this piece of paper out to help expedite a quick discussion?
No, I don't think it's not. Probably could have looked and replaced it.
Okay. I think it'll help you understand where I am. Dr. Hartness, you're welcome to one of these two. Jeff, I think there's enough. You're welcome. Ooh, but I'll keep one. I think there'll be enough. If not, you can share. It's not rocket science. Although stating the purpose, stating the purpose of the reason for the agenda is not required, I think it's like helpful if I explain this and maybe make up your minds based on what's said and seen here. Plan B, A Plan B for a Davie High School scenario would be, Plan A obviously is that, and you can give one of these to newspaper.
I'm making this.
Okay, good. I'm sorry. I think everybody here would agree that we should do everything prior to the May 6 vote that we can to ensure that something happens as soon after May 6 as possible, be it a renovation project or the brand-new high school for the county. I think everybody here is in agreement that that should happen ASAP after that May 6 vote. Plan B would be a two-story structure that was approved by the former vote board. That would solve the issues of getting rid of the mobile units, renovate the locker rooms as approved by the former board, lighting, ventilation, adequate drainage, whatever would solve the problem that was worked out then. Third, renovation of the cafeteria approved by the former board and eliminate issues of crowding and excessive number of lunch periods. The facts that I know of that I think are prudent. Plan B was proposed by the former board, voted 6-0 in favor, the best option to solve the Davie High School needs as decided by the right at that then time of person, at then the right people at that time, the right persons agreed that they'd been haggling over this for, at then, the past 10 to 12 years. Number two, renovate Davie High School represents significantly less cost than a new Davie High School. It's been proven to us now that the state financial picture is poorer than it was at the time that all this was done. And we also should realize locally that it's the same people that are feeding into the state tax revenue as it is local tax revenue. And I've said before, I'm opposed to putting any additional taxes on the people right now if we can avoid it. Two earlier votes were votes for support of two Davie High Schools failed, and I put more than 60 percent. I couldn't remember the exact numbers, but I think one was really 70 to 30 and the other one was like 68 to 32 or something, but it was more than 60 percent. The attempt to bypass public vote went to the LGC in Raleigh, the third attempt, and again, all three of those I know are for two different high schools. And I don't have it written down, but a lot of discussion happened, went after these three events, and this new attempt for a new school is for a single new high school. So I know that that is in there and that is an advantage to the county, or I believe it is. A great amount of time, finance, and effort has been, is being, and will continue to be expensed, and I think rightly so. I think this majority of the school board wants this new high school, and I think it is right and appropriate for the majority of the school board to, Dr. Hartness has signed on for speaking engagements in the past and probably will get other speaking engagements in the future, so it is right to promote the building of one new high school. The bond referendum will be held. It is on a ballot on May 6. The bond referendum will either fail or pass. The public that I've spoken to and others on the Board of Education wants, that's supposed to be once, an end to or a final resolution of this issue of either new or renovate. Plan B is a smart, realistic, and effective use of Davie County Board of Education, administration and staff time to ensure that something will start as soon as possible after May 6. And I think it's a responsible thing to do to look at two. Dr. Hartness and Chad and other board members, I don't know, and I have to be part of the discussion to figure out how to do it. I don't know if you put two options on the ballot. You'd have to ask commissioners because they're the one that's going to decide that. I don't know. I know the majority of the board wants this new high school. I'm conceding to that fact, and I think the majority or a lot of, at least a lot of the administration. I know some teachers at the current high school that don't think a new high school is an appropriate thing. So anyway, after discussion today, a positive or favorable vote today by the Board of Education, this Board of Education administration staff would have way ample time, that's probably not exactly the best wordage there, Miss English teacher, time to do the due diligence necessary prior to May 6, that if the bond vote passes, that I would like to put on paper somewhere that we authorize construction of that new high school, which is Plan A, to begin on the 7th, so that we're not waiting forever and ever. Now, I remember Dr. Hartness making a presentation and/or hearing from the planning and development folks that had a vote happened in this past, no, coming up November, then it would have been on the exact right cycle to move in there at the beginning of a year. So if we start on May 7, where does that allows for all kinds of unknowns to happen? So if the construction has delays or weather issues, et cetera, there will be a start day. If there's a new building, we are going to start in there at some point.
Yeah, but that can't, later.
What can't happen?
You can't start the construction.
Until you have the financing lined up.
Okay, so we do everything due diligence-wise that we could possibly get done so that once the finances are committed, that we can go with it, that we have the planning done so that we don't sit here around this horseshoe for however many more months or years before something gets done. So I would love to hear your feedback, and I know I'm just throwing this on you now.
Yeah, and that would be my question, Paul. I certainly respect your opinion. As you said, you have respected ours. I was wondering if you gave Dr. Hartness notifications that you were going to bring this or our chairman to the meeting tonight, prior to the meeting?
I brought it 30 days ahead of time.
So Dr. Hartness has a copy of this?
I did have it.
You do now?
I did not bring this piece of paper 30 days. I brought it to the board, to Chad Fuller's attention, and all of you were here last month, that I wanted to bring forward either, and I backed off the stoppage of the new construction. I'd stated that last week, and that was, the words came out the wrong way. A Plan B is a priority as I see it for this county.
Right. And I hear what you're saying, and you did certainly make that motion the last time. I was just wondering if you had given the superintendent at this point a copy of this prior to this meeting? Okay.
I also believe at the last meeting, several of us did share that we felt like that we had already gone through the discussion as far as what's appropriate for the high school and your Plan B, 1, 2, and 3. Basically, we're all talked about and did happen, but we didn't have facility study at that time, and after facility study, it brought to our knowledge base what was appropriate and what wasn't appropriate. And as you go through this, I believe the discussion from this board and other boards' members, I've been on here for five years and three months, and I can say we have come to an agreement, may not be 6-0 agreement, but an agreement to build a new high school to go to bond. We've gone to the county commissioners, we've done our resolutions, we know it's May 2014, and at each time we voted, we said, "No Plan B." We are, this is our plan, and this is our plan in this board, and that's what I stand behind.
I agree 100% with what you said, except for one piece of that, that the majority of this board agrees with support and promotion by staff and administration that a new high school is what you're after. I've heard that, and I'm, that's an opinion. I'm A-OK with that. But here's my point, that we have not discussed, we have dodged this bullet. There is an election process, and there is a bond referendum that, well, I don't know what it looks like yet, none of us do, I don't guess, what it will look like on May 6. And there will be a vote, and there will be marketing of what this majority wants. It has been marketed, it is being, and it will be, all the way up to March 6, and I am way A-OK with that. However, those people out there that go in and vote, they're going to vote yes or no or whatever, however it's said, they're going to either affirm it or reject it. And if it is rejected, where will this board be on what to do elsewise? I think it's real wrong for us to not look at that possibility. And we don't have to market it, we don't have to put it out in the public, et cetera. But if you don't have a fail-safe and you go into it knowing that you ought to, I think, knowing that you ought to have a fail-safe, we're talking about a serious, serious thing for this county. And if it doesn't fly, not because you don't want it or you do want it, by the majority of the people that are going to vote for the paying of it, if you don't have a well-thought-out plan, then it's as if on May 7, we're right back at zero, and how long will it take us to come up with something else to come forward? And then it has to go before the people to be voted on again, and then, so how many more months and/or years would it be before something gets done to eliminate problems that we already know exist down there? Issues that have been talked about for years. At that time, a seriously plausible, is that the right word, a correct, a best thought solution was on the board, and it was voted by this body, not us, but the former board. So it was well-thought-out, well-thought-out at that time, and it was a workable solution that would eliminate, eliminate a lot of the issues and things that were brought to the board and the school staff and administration. For years and years, we've been talking about it, when you were a principal down there, and you've put input into what the issues were and what the problems were. And Wendy and Clint and I, when we were campaigning, some of that discussion was in our campaign stuff. Some of that we talked about when we went to the School Board 101. Right or wrong, good or bad, I think this board owes it to the success of the school system, to every single student that could possibly come into the school system, and the possibility of people leaving the system for greener grass elsewise, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I really do believe that it is a very smart thing, and Barbara, I appreciate what you just said, but only 97% of it. This board has not discussed what's going to happen if that bond fails. And I think it is the responsibility of this board to cover every nook and cranny that we can. Here is a nook and a cranny. It is, what if it doesn't pass? Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know how to say everything that's in my, in my brain. What about a Plan C? I mean, or a D? I mean, I, you know, I'm just, I'm like, where do you, where do you stop? I'm with you, but this is our plan. This is what a lot of people have put in, a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of money to do, and I just, I think the positives don't outweigh the negatives to coming up with another plan. You talk about the time-saving that it would have. I don't really, if you have to go to a bond, you would still have to go to another bond, so you would have time, you would have all that stuff. So the only thing that you would have is that time for another plan, and I really don't like the use of "solution" because what you're talking about as a Plan B, it's not a solution. And you know that. I mean, it's a solution to if the number-one problem was, "We don't want mobile classrooms." Okay, that's a solution for that. But it's not a solution for our bigger problem that this county is dealing with. And I just, I really think it would do more, more harm than good than having this Plan B that you're not going to put out in the public. I mean, we're in the public. So I mean, you know, it's going to be out there, it would be out there, it would be promoted by different people, and it just, it would be a, it would be even more of a mess, in my opinion, that we have. And I think we've got a plan, I think we've got the right people implementing the plan, and I think it's best that we show our full support for this plan. And I say full support, this board. Individually, I know how we've all voted, and everybody knows where everybody stands on that, but I just, I think for the big picture for this county, I think we need to support one plan and move forward with that. And where are we going to be after that? If this vote, we're going to be, we're still going to be in a, you know, in an old high school, and that's where we're going to be. And then we would talk about, I mean, we'd just take what we've got and make decisions based off of that, moving forward the best we can at that time. So that's...
Well, you're talking about committing, and we owe it to the community. We, well, I think, from my opinion, what we owe to the community is to get behind and advocate for what we think is best. That's what I think we owe to the community. As Clint said, you know, the community knows as individuals on this board where we all stand. No secret about that. We all know where we stand, and there's absolutely no problem with that. I have no problem with that. Everybody has their right to their opinion. But we have talked about this, we've talked about, we've talked about building the $6 million building, I'm going to call it, and getting rid of the mobile units. I would agree with Clint. That's not, that is a solution to get rid of mobile units. That's not a solution to solve our problem. And from my perspective, we don't need to, if, if, you know, and let me go on from there. If, if we decide that, I mean, if the community decides that this new high school is not what they want via a bond vote, then the next solution that comes up, from my opinion, the community needs to decide on that, too. If it's going and building a $6 million building or spending $45 million at the existing campus, the community needs to have their say on that as well via a bond vote. So I don't, I don't see any, any benefit, from my perspective, in, in doing anything differently than what we've done so far. We've, we've, we've talked about this, from my opinion, as much as we can talk about it. I don't think this body, us continuing to debate this, is going to do this issue any good. It's time for the community, the voters, to have their say on this. And I think that's where we are. Obviously, other people feel differently about that, but I believe that's where we are.
Well, I'm going to say this real quick. I believe you're right, that's where we are. There will be a vote, and there'll be a decision made, but I do agree with Paul, and the fact is that, that we need to have a backup plan because personally, you know, I'll say it's 50-50. My doubts is a 50-50 shot of passing because of the, because of the amount of debt and the tax increase associated with it. And you know, but, but that's where I'm at on it. And you know, and I'm going to tell you, if we, if we go into this thing, if you base the need for this high school based on that facility study, that's a poor reason to move into it because we basically have ignored that facility study. We've ignored it. So that's all I got to say. I'm ready to call the question.
That, that sounds good. I would say that, you know, my, I'm basing, and everybody else can voice their opinion, I'm basing this on, I guess, the last 10 years plus of, of discussion and building to this point. That's what I'm basing it on. So, but that's, that's where I am. But we're going.
I just want to, just, and I know Steve's already called for the question, but I just want to say, Paul, I understand what, where you're coming from to say that if this fails, what are we going to do then? I don't think we can define what that is going to be. And to put that out on a piece of paper like this, and you've already admitted that some of the facts weren't even, were already there, I just don't think that it's...
By the way, some of what's here, I don't want to say is intentionally incorrect.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think that obviously there will be a plan, something after that. Obviously, there'll be something, but to actually put it down in terms of exactly what that would be, I just can't support that. But I understand that you want to be, look as though we're being very responsible, and I believe we would be. We would do what we needed to do.
Or members, if we could kind of try to compress this to whether to amend the agenda or not because you're going to one-on-one time to your position?
I go back to my original motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? Okay. All right, we're, we have a motion on the floor asking to amend the agenda, and I think we all understand what that amendment is. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Two, Mr. Drexler and Mr. Ridenhour. All opposed. Five opposed. Motion fails. Apologize. Now, back to adopting the original agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? We have a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second? We have a second. Do we have any other discussion about the agenda? All in favor. Five. All opposed. Two opposed. Thank you. At this point, we'll move into our closed session. And we need a motion to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to discuss personnel matters protected by the state law and North Carolina general statutes 143-318.11A6 to discuss student matters made confidential by 143-318.11A1, general statute 115C-402, and FERPA. Do you have that motion? We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor. We're now in closed session. We are now back in open session. I want to say we're glad to see everybody today for our September 3 regular scheduled meeting. If you would, bow with me for our invocation. As we gather this afternoon, I express thanks for this day and all of its blessings. I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance today. Further, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms we enjoy. We pause to remember the students, faculty members, and families in our system and community who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are with them. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and citizens of Davie County. Amen. At this time, we will ask Girl Scout troop 4159, 596 from First United Methodist Church in Moxville to come and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the amendments from the regular meeting of August 6, 2013. We have a motion by Mr. Drexler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? 7-0. Next, we have on our agendas important dates, and I will point out a few. We have, there's a North Carolina School Board Association district meeting that three members will be attending on September the 18th in Randolph County. And then we have on September the 19th, we will, the Board of Education will have lunch at William R. Davie. We're all looking forward to that. And I think that'll, that's it for this month. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Hartness for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My comments will be brief tonight. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday weekend. We have had an excellent opening to the 2013-14 school year. All the planning and the preparation by all of our staff has, has worked out really well, and we've had a wonderful first five days of school. I will tell you, as I've told some other folks, I felt better about the opening of school this year than any year that I've started as superintendent, and that's just a testament to all the hard work of people in our organization. I want to say thank you. We have Officer Brockwell here in the corner. I'm going to say hello back there. I want to thank Officer Brockwell and all the Davie County Sheriff's Department and law enforcement agencies that worked together to conduct training, the three days, 1st of August. And they came together and did a lot of simulations within our schools out at South Davie Middle School. They have more training planned, but I understand that went really well. Went out and visited them, and I will tell you, folks, that we're fortunate and blessed to have law enforcement agencies and other emergency personnel who keep us safe and our children safe every day. So Officer Brockwell, we appreciate you and all the sheriff's department for what you do. Tonight, we'll have an update from Aaron Full a little bit later in the agenda. Aaron will give us an update on our enrollment based on our five-day enrollment numbers. It won't be our official enrollment because we won't have those until later in the school year, but our five-day enrollment is within 1% of where we were last year. And I was looking today, it's .12% of where our demographer projected us to be. So I would just say the data from our facilities assessment and the experts that we worked with are proving to be extremely accurate. And Aaron's going to share with you also some more information about our cohort graduation rate, and I'll save some comments to... rate, and I'll save some comments till, till that point in time in the agenda. I do wanna introduce a special guest we have tonight who will be starting full-time with us tomorrow, Dr. David Snapp. David, would you stand? Dr. Snapp is our new principal at South Davie Middle School. Let's give David a warm welcome. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. At this time in the agenda, it's time for recognitions, and first, I think we have recognition of Teacher Assistant of the Year, Dr. Danny Carter, if he would come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the staff, members of the community. It is your distinct pleasure tonight to get to be introduced to Ms. Joan Forbes, who is our Teacher Assistant of the Year. Ms. Forbes started life as a surgical assista, continued to become a mother and grandmother and seamstress and artist and award-winning photographer, and all kinds of things that you might not know about Ms. Forbes, but make her a very interesting person. In addition to that, she is one of the few remaining members of the Davie County staff initially trained by Dr. Morris from Appalachian State in first steps and second steps reading. And as a result, if you took a job tomorrow as a teacher at Moxville Elementary School, the person most likely to train you in first steps and second steps reading is Ms. Forbes. If we needed a poster child to say to folks who disbelieve that teacher assistants are indispensable to the education of children, that would be Joan Forbes. The parable I told when I introduced her at our convocation remains the perfect embodiment of who Ms. Forbes is. We've all probably heard that parable of the little guy who was walking down the beach, the beach is strewn with starfish, and the little fellow is picking up starfish and throwing them back in the ocean. And an old curmudgeon like me came along and said, "You can't make a difference throwing one starfish back into the ocean." And the little fellow picked up a starfish and threw it in the ocean and said it made a difference for that one. And that's Joan Forbes every day. Every day, she meets with children in small groups and teaches them how to read, and she makes a difference, one at a time, for that one, and then the next one, and eventually for lots of students at Moxville. So, we are very proud to have Ms. Forbes represent us as Teacher Assistant of the Year for 2013-14. Congratulations.
I am honored, but I'm just one of many highly qualified TAs in our county. Ms. Forbes?
On behalf of the board, we want to present you with this certificate to say thank you and congratulations. We appreciate all that you do and all the TAs.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm Noelle Grady Smith. I serve as Executive Director of Curriculum and Leadership Development for Davie County Schools. I'm so glad to see so many of our community members here tonight, and I would like to thank Chairman Fuller, Dr. Hartness, and all the school board members for joining me in one of the best recognitions we can make. And this is students who go above and beyond, and they take their summer to go to the Governor's School. And you have to be selected, and it is a very large pool of students that they select from. This year, we had 606 students across the state described as the brightest and most talented rising high school juniors and seniors. They attended a five-week session either in the east or the west, and we have five who were here tonight with us to celebrate the fact that they completed the Governor's School curriculum and did a wonderful job. First, I'd like to call Kathryn McKern, who is representing Davie County Schools. She attended the east campus in dance. I'm a little partial to that one. Congratulations. And you'll just stand right up here. Next, I'd like to call up Meredith Ratlidge, who had an English concentration, and she was at the west campus, right here at Salem. Skylar Tranquil was also an English-focused student, and she went to the east campus. Danielle Wood was in instrumental music, French horn no less, and she was in Salem at the west campus. Alyssa Sutton represented us with natural science, and she was on the west campus as I wanted to point out how unusual North Carolina is in having this opportunity for students. It was legislative action to attract students into learning more, going beyond their academic year, giving themselves a chance to be open to all kinds of new possibilities. I have a son who was the president of the Governor's School when he was there, and it was such a large step up for so many of the students to be together in that intellectual environment. And I'm sure you found that it was very stimulating, and you learned from all the people who were connected in different ways. So, we expect great things of you as you go into your senior year, and we're very proud of you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to congratulate each one of these young ladies on behalf of the school board for their hard work, and I know they're looking forward to this.
Thank you, Noelle. This time, Ms. Cofed will come up and recognize the back-to-school community efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Hartness, board members, community. Davie County is blessed with a generous community, and this shines through each August in preparation for a new school year. This year, a group of community members worked to consolidate these, these efforts. Solicitations for supplies at Walmart began in July this year, along with different groups collecting specific items. The Second Annual Build a Backpack Bash was held at Walmart on Saturday, August the 3rd, to officially kick off the back-to-school season. The Davie High marching band, football players, and cheerleaders helped make that event even more exciting. On Saturday, August 17th, the YMCA Bright Beginnings and the Back-to-School Empowerment Day with the Build a Backpack distribution was held. Select students from Coolamie, Conanser, and Moxville Elementary Schools met at the Davie Family YMCA for breakfast before heading over to Walmart to purchase back-to-school outfits. Volunteers from the Rotary Club of Moxville, Hillsdale Sunrise Rotary Club, school employees, and the community were partnered with students to help them shop. The students were excited about their purchases, and they were very appreciative of the experience. After shopping, the Davie County High School gym was packed with students and parents for the Back-to-School Empowerment Day. This event is held annually for all students to get ready, get set, and succeed. Students and their parents enjoyed games, bounce houses, speakers, and music. Lunch was provided, and the students received their backpacks from the Build a Backpack effort. Many thanks to all those that helped make this a wonderful day for our families and to prepare our students for a successful school year. As of August 21st, A Storehouse for Jesus had served 292 children and has given away some 6,500 items. Through Build a Backpack and the Back-to-School Empowerment Initiative, there were 1,100 backpacks that were filled with supplies and made available for the students. The remaining supplies were distributed to the schools for their supply closets. These efforts would not have been possible without the support of our community. We thank you and the Build, the Back-to-School Community Efforts Committee for all that was done. At this time, I'll recognize the committee members. I don't see anyone from Walmart, but Tim Stewart and Amy Bello was on our committee. We have Melinda Beecham and Cindy, come on up, Shrewsbury from United Way. From the Back-to-School Empowerment Initiative, we have Nettie, Imes Barber, Angela Imes, Gladys Scott, come on up, the ladies, Sandra James, and Tamela Tatum. Amy Wardwine from Big Brothers Big Sisters served on our committee as law, as well as Chris Comer from the Y. Do we have anyone from the Y here? Okay. Mary Beth Sebold and Sheila Smith from Smart Start. We had Davie High students Kyle Bullins, who has graduated, and Ryan Heath. Let's see, Ryan. And from Calvary West, we had Alexandra Gaskins and Brandon Short. And from A Storehouse for Jesus, we have Marie Collins and Jean Young. Thank you for everything that y'all did to make this back-to-school year as succe, as successful as it was. Thank you.
And I would like, I'd give a big round of applause. On behalf of the Davie County Board of Education, we kind of do humbly saying thank you for your extra hours and the kindness that you give not only to the children but to the family. We are so proud to be a part of this county because of you. You make it happen for children. And on behalf of the board, we say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
At this time, I would ask Aaron Foyle to come up to talk to us about Title I Reward Schools, and I would also like to echo Ms. Owens' thanks. We are, it, we're, we're a wonderful community here, and, and it, and it's because of folks like you.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize two of our schools. Every year now, DPI recognizes two, well, they recognize the top 10% of Title I schools, either in progress or performance. We are very pleased this year to have two of our schools on this list. Both Moxville Elementary School and Conanser Elementary School were recognized as reward schools for being the top 10% in the state for Title I schools in performance. We have Ms. Mars from Moxville Elementary and Dr. Wren from Conanser. If you'd come up and get your certificate for your school, please.
On behalf of the school board, all the members here, I wanna congratulate you both on whatever it was that you did to achieve a top 10% in the whole shoot match. Very, very good work. Very good.
Congratulations to Moxville Elementary and Conanser Elementary. At this time, moving on with our agenda, we're at consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Horn. Our motion was by Ms. Livengood, and our second was by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Now, we're to the business section of our agenda, and I will turn it over here to Dr. Hartness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on our agenda is a budget resolution. Each year, we're required to have a balanced budget, and now that we have our projected budgets from the state and federal government and our local current expense, before you on this agenda item is the budget resolution for 2013-14, and we would ask the board to consider adopting this budget resolution as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Do we have a motion to adopt this budget, budget resolution? Sorry.
Chairman Fuller, I'd like to make a amendment to the budget resolution. Last meeting, Aug., I believe it was August 6th, we, we debated the issue of what, how we were gonna handle our teacher assistance with a cut of $473,000 from the state. I would, and I said that night that neither choice was very good. I mean, well, I hated to do either one. I had trouble sleeping that night before, and it's really, I've really pondered on this, you know, for the last month, and I would like for us to look at taking an additional $473,000 from our unassigned fund balance and assign that and fund these teacher, teacher assistants beginning next Monday, reinstate their days, and, and get them back to the hours they, they were at. I know our fund balance is 17% of our, around 17% of our local budget. The, if I'd done the math right, I think we could drop that number to somewhere around 14.5% of, of the local budget, and we, we could still have enough money to pull that 470-some thousand off. We may not need quite that much. Dr. Hartness and Ms. Link could, could probably figure it out. But even at that, you know, we, we took the recommendation of Evergreen Study to, to formulate a, a policy, a fund balance policy, and we did vote on it to, to state that at 17%. And I've done a little background check. Even the counties in North Carolina only required to have 8%. That's what the LGC recommends, and, you know, here we recognize the Teacher Assistant of the Year tonight, and, you know, these, these folks are vital as, you know, we address things like, you, you take, most of these teacher assistants are in K3, but they, that's gonna affect our dropout rate, I believe, because I, you know, if these kids learn to read and they have the support, then it's gonna help us with our dropout rate. And, and these people are important. We've said they've been important time and time and time again, all of us have, and I think at this point in time, I'd like to offer that as an amendment to the, to the budget resolution, that we go ahead and assign that additional money for, up to $473,000, and fund these TAs beginning next Monday for the 13-14 school year. And, and, you know, we would let them know this is a one-year deal and a one-year deal only. Dr. Hartness said, you know, it could be, it's probably inevitable that it's gonna happen, but, you know, a lot of these folks lost 25% of their income. Some of them are single mothers, you know, and, and this, this, this was a huge hit on them. And I, I feel strongly about this, and I hope that this board would, would consider that.
I would, I would, I'd, I'd like to, before we move forward with that, what do we do with a motion that is contrary to our board policy? How, how do we handle that? Because at this point, that's contrary to what our fund balance policy says. So, how, what do we need to?
I don't have your fund balance policy memorized, so you're more familiar with it than I am, but you wouldn't, if you have a fund balance policy, you would have to follow that policy unless you amended the policy.
I've got it. I have a copy of the fund balance policy, and, and, you know, now, I'm not an attorney Jill, so I don't, I think I got a copy of it, but our fund balance policy says that this board has, has the option of, of, you know, of changing that. I know I got it. By vote of this board, it can be changed.
We're looking at the policy, but we think that the policy has to be amended before we can consider this.
The other question I have, has the staff been even informed of this possibility so they can work on this? Because it was my understanding that when we voted, all options were looked at and my concern is the whole system.
Well, I guess what I would say after this policy issue is that, I mean, I would, my question would be if we could talk a little bit about the impact on the system. I know the impact on the individuals and it's not fun and not good and we've talked about all that. But if we could talk about the impact on the system a little bit and how we minimize that, I'd just like to discuss that a little bit. But I don't know where we go with this, with this policy issue. Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm still reading.
Okay, okay. Well, maybe, I understand.
May be necessary for me to make a motion to amend the fund balance policy first. I mean, I'm not sure.
I'm fairly certain. Amend a policy, I'll have to look at your policies, but usually in order to amend a policy with substance, you would have to post it and give the public time to comment on it and that's what I'm reading this for. If you have an approved policy, you have a process to change your policies that would include posting for comment before the policy change takes effect. So, and I don't know, I don't know what, how this affects, how your motion affects the fund balance and so it's hard for me to tell how this policy would come into play. But if, if the policy is implicated by your, and it would violate your policy, then I would say you'd have to amend your policy first. And my recollection about your policy approval process is that you post them for a certain period of time, ordinarily it's 30 days or something like that. And then you receive public comment and then that's, then you consider it at the next meeting before the change would take place.
Is that, is that for the board that we get the 30 days or is it for the public? Because I know we, a lot of times when we amend policies, we're giving them, you know, one month and then we vote on, vote on the next month.
I'd say it's for everybody.
But in the meantime, I believe they're posted for public comment, aren't they?
They're posted on our website. The board just approved a series of policies in the consent agenda just a few minutes ago that were presented to the board last month. So they've been posted for a month for the board to review and anyone else to review. There were no public comments or any concerns brought forward to staff, therefore it was part of the consent agenda at this board meeting.
Unassigned fund balance is the residual amount of fund balance in the local current expense fund and it represents, unassigned fund balance may be assessed in the event of unexpected expenditures up to the minimum established level upon approval of a budget revision by the Board of Education. In the event of project revenue shortfalls, it is the responsibility of superintendent or designated to report the projection to the Board of Education at the next regularly scheduled board meeting and should be recorded in the minutes. Any budget revision that result in the unassigned fund balance dropping below the minimum level will require the approval of the Board of Education.
So, so again, our, we're working on figuring out what the process is for our policy, Mr. And Ms. Wilson's working on that. But I would, if we want to, if we want to talk about this, do we have any other comments?
Well, I was just going to say, before I think we could vote to do that, I would want to see the impact from our financial office and see how that affects the total budget before we go ahead and make that decision here tonight. Are you asking for that decision to be made tonight?
I would like this to be implemented Monday morning.
I guess my only suggestion or call it a concern would be that, you know, I feel like this is something that we would need to run, run by our administration in terms of principals at schools. I mean, they've already been operating now for a week and, you know, who's to say that they may be finding that they're okay at certain schools and some of that, if we're going to tap into our fund balance for something, then maybe they have a need for those funds to be used for something else. So, I mean, if we're talking about making that large of a move of money, I think that's where we have to get the folks who are at the school level involved or at least get their feedback first.
Well, I would agree and that was my point earlier. We need to, to me, we need to, from the superintendent's perspective, we need to figure out what the impact is of doing this again. I would understand completely, and we've talked all about this, of the impact on the individual TAs. And nobody likes that and we're all concerned with that. But I think where we're, you know, what we've discussed at the last meeting and what Dr. Harnness came up with and Ms. Mink was a more sustainable plan. You know, we can thank the legislators in Raleigh for where we are with our TA issue. And again, my opinion is that we need to, we need to look at that in more detail than making a split-second decision here at the board meeting.
Actually, your policy seems to anticipate that in addition, if you're going to drop your fund balance below the acceptable limit, that you will also have a plan to replenish it within two years, that that's a component of making that decision.
I know in Dr. Harnness's budget statement, he made the statement, and it's true, we're going to have to depend more and more on local revenue. And I asked this to be done on August 8th. And that's the reason I'm bringing it tonight.
I would just say that the board voted unanimously to adopt Option 2 after that was presented. And that was presented after much discussion with principals and with representative teacher assistants. It was not what we wanted to recommend, but it was the only sustainable option that we had. Mr. Fuller, you are correct. The legislature make this line item cut. If you're going to sustain this, you cannot sustain that with fund balance and there is no plan or a way to reestablish fund balance within a two-year period of time if you were to use that fund balance. This has not been a good thing for Davie County schools or any other school district in North Carolina. But we don't have a sustainable plan in place to sustain teacher assistants or any other positions that were cut. I mean, if we're going to put that on the table, how about the other teacher positions that we've lost over time? So I think you've got to carefully consider that and consider what the future holds, that this was a recurring reduction by the North Carolina General Assembly, was not a one-time issue. So I would be hesitant to go that path, but we will do what the board's pleasure is. I will tell you that the staff has spent an enormous number of hours communicating this plan. I met in front of every teacher assistant and explained to them what the options were. The feedback that I've received is the teacher assistants were thankful for the way that we handled this. We handled it the best way that we could. I am not happy about the cuts, but this Board of Education did not create this situation.
I agree, we didn't. But we do have the opportunity this one year to do something about it, in my opinion. And you're right, both of you are right, it's not sustainable. You can't continue to take your savings, continue to operate and I understand that. But this would give us a year with these teacher assistants full-time. It'd give them a year to plan. Some of them were forced to retire and, you know, I was not pleased with the decision. You know, and I feel like we've had ample opportunity to address this before school started and we did not.
I guess I'm confused on how it was not addressed. I mean, again, because we didn't like the, nobody liked it.
My concerns afterwards were not addressed.
Okay. I thought you were talking about the issue at hand was not addressed before school.
No, my concerns afterward.
So I would, I would go back, Ms. Wilson. Where, Mr. Ridenhour has put a motion on the floor and my question is, how do we, we're going to have to give notice or make a plan for reducing the fund balance below what our policy says before we can, and we don't need to, I mean, I-
Well, these are your policies and so you have to give thoughtful consideration to both what you intended when you put them in place and how this would affect that. So what your policy says is that your fund balance should not drop below 17%. I assume you don't, and I'm not sure, Mr. Ridenhour, but you don't want to actually change that ongoing, or do you?
Well, it's not necessary. But, you know, I just felt like, unless, the only way it'd be necessary is if we can't pull the money out unless we change it. But my understanding, based on what I've read, the Board of Education can vote to do this.
Right. So you could, so part of my question really was what is exactly what you intend? So if what you intended was to say, I don't want to amend the policy, I want to keep our fund balance at 17%, but for this one time, I want to go below 17%, then it appears based on your own policy, what you would have to do is also have the plan to replenish within two years as part of a component of what you'd recommend. If on the other hand, you wanted to drop your fund balance limit to 15%, then you'd be amending the policy and doing it that way. So there are a number of ways you could do, a number of things that might accomplish, if you had board support, what you're talking about, depending on how you wanted to go about it. Whether you wanted to permanently drop the number, the percentage of fund balance, then that you would amend the policy on fund balance. If what you wanted to do was drop this year's fund balance below the limit, you'd have to then have also in place this plan for replenishing it within two years.
I'm an insurance agent, not an attorney, so, but I want, I want somewhere or another, we don't have to change the policy unless it's necessary to change the policy. I want to pull, I want to pull that, and it may not take the full 473,000. We had 30,000 or so or something that was, that was already available to be assigned. So, you know.
I think at the end of the day, even considering this, takes some thought, but I think what Ms. Bricki, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson is saying is that if we intend to pull from the fund balance and leave it at that level, then we are going to have to change the policy, period. So again, I think it would take, there has been a lot of time and effort and thought put into this and anguish, I may add, to dealing with the issue that the legislature confronted us with. I guess my question is, is your motion still on the floor and what is it?
It is. And I'll see if I can say it. If, if, if we can draw off whatever's necessary, 473,000 off of the fund balance to fund the teachers' assistants beginning next Monday, with a vote of this board, I would like to do that tonight. Now, if we've got to replenish that based on our policy, then we've, we've got the choice at that time to either amend our policy and replenish it or not replenish it or set up a replenishment plan.
What, yeah. What our policy says is, at the time that we draw the money down, we need to have a plan in place. That's what the policy says. So we either need to, we either need to change policy, again, there needs to be thought put into this in how we move through changing policy and dealing with this.
Yeah, I agree that there needs to be some thought because I'm a little confused on the dollar amount. You're saying 473,000, but we may not need 473,000. To make that decision, it's kind of unknown and you want to implement it before Monday.
The only reason we won't need, may not need 473,000 is because we've already had one week to prepare for school and one week of school and one day or, yeah.
But what I'm saying is we can't vote on a, number one, we haven't made a decision on the policy, but number two, we can't vote on a figure because we don't know what the actual number would be. Is that correct? I mean-
We had time to do something about this. That's my point at this, and that's all I'm going to say. But my, my, my motion is to pull 470, up to 473,000 off of the, out of the fund balance and fund the TAs beginning Monday, September the 10th, fully.
Yeah, we need a second.
If that's it, I second it. But is there nothing more?
Is there not anymore?
Can I, any discussion, any contribution?
Sure.
Okay. Well, that was a second.
Okay, so we have a second. Now we're going to have a discussion.
Okay. When we had individual meetings with Dr. Harnness and staff members about what problem we were into, that's meeting about what to do with funding the teachers' assistance positions. It is, everybody's understanding and everybody believes that state of North Carolina revenues were what they were and allotment to Davie County and other LEAs, forced reduction in money available to pay for TAs. There is no doubt in anybody's mind on this board that I'm aware of, that a lot of time and effort was put into coming up with some potential solutions that it was narrowed down to two that we were presented with. Don't doubt that, don't fight that. If there, and this was said, I said it, I don't know who else said it, but if there is any way possible in all of the finance that you could come up with or you could come up with, shuffling of cards, et cetera, if there is any way at all possible to fund those positions, I would like to see it come from somewhere somehow. And the answer remained that the two options as presented were the best options available with everybody understanding all the dialogue, all the discussions. And reluctantly, I think everybody around this table voted for Plan B rather than Plan A. No doubt in my mind that Plan B was better than Plan A. However, we all sat and twiddled our thumbs and wished that you had not been forced into a corner and that there was some other solution that was available. Steve's motion to take money out of the fund balance to pay for the teacher assistants for another year, for one year, giving them time to find other jobs or et cetera, et cetera, and/or our own money from the state would be better next year than it has been to replenish that fund balance and/or further TA hires for the following years. Everybody had talked and agreed and I'll state again today that the results that this business produces is called graduating students. And in order to have achieved the level of graduation and the progress that the school system has made has been attributable in part to those teachers' assistants. I heard some wording that teacher assistants are treated like the lowest of lows as far as the school system was concerned. And Raleigh said something about, well, if you've got to cut something, you always cut the lowest thing out of the system. Well, I don't know whether it's the lowest or lows, I might disagree, but part of the school system is business and in business, you have to do certain things to make things work. There has to be balanced budgets, et cetera. So that the state of North Carolina decided to cut teachers', teacher assistant positions was no one that this table's fault or in this system's fault. If there is a way that has presented itself that funds those positions, I'm all in favor of it. If we have to amend policies or change policies or whatever it takes, if it takes more than until between now and Monday to get that to happen, if there has to be notice, et cetera, et cetera, then let's do whatever it takes to have people continue doing the job that they have been doing to get the product that we have gotten.
Do we have any other discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I respect our superintendent and our staff on, in our system. They worked hours to put this Plan A and Plan B together for us to discuss. Every member that it affected had input. We were explained in detail what had gone through. I, as an educator, retired, understand what it's like to get at midnight, when a budget's been voted on and approved, to start working on it at midnight, with schools starting. I understand running on a budget till October before something has been approved, and then have to backpedal. I appreciate the work that our staff did to bring us a plan, and I appreciate the fact that we took the time to discuss it and to vote on it the last time. And this surprises me, because I don't believe our staff has, in had any idea this was coming. And to be honest with you, I feel for the TAs, I started out as a TA. But I also know that we are a system, a great system, and we are great because we all work together to make it happen. It bothers me that we've had surprises without conversation. That's not the way we operate.
There is no surprise.
Do we have any other comments?
I would just, I'm sorry, go ahead. Make tough decisions up here. I feel like we've made a decision, and things have been implemented because of those decisions. And I think we need to, need to move on, as much as I hate the, the consequences of those decisions, we've made decisions based off of recommendations. Those recommendations have come because of looking at our policies that are in place. If we've got a problem with the policy, then we need to take a look at the policy. But now, all of a sudden, to change the policy because we don't like the decisions made based on those policies, I feel like we're gonna be just reacting to everything that comes about, and this is a huge one. I just, and, I don't know, to, to, I'm assuming that our staff, if there is a way to do this without affecting the teachers' assistance, the people that I know involved, I'm gonna have to assume that they've looked at all those things. And I really just don't think that there's a magic, magic wand to, to addressing this. And I, and I agree that this is the only sustainable option. This is a recurring reduction. I had discussions with Dr. Harkness about, boy, if we knew that this was just a temporary thing, and the next year that all this thing, that it was gonna be solved, then, okay, we need to look at that. That's, that's not gonna be the case, the little bit that I know about. I hate the decision, but again, I think it was the right one for what, where we are. And now, again, a month later, to sort of be second guessing and trying to roll back everything that we've already implemented, I just don't think is the, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. Enough talking.
Do we have any other discussion?
One other thing, you know, it's, it's, it's four hundred and seventy-three thousand, it's less than one percent of our total budget. We should be able to find that money somewhere.
There are a lot of needs, I, I would say, that, that I would love to see us finding money for, but if it's not sustainable, that's, that's, that's the issue. And I would agree with Mr. Junker and Ms. Owens, that Dr. Harkness and staff have put a lot of time into this issue, and I appreciate what they've done. And again, as I stated earlier, a lot of time and anguish, and none of these decisions were made half-heartedly, or quickly, or there, there was a lot of thought that went into this. So, I would, we, we have a motion on the floor to amend the budget resolution. And I guess I will call for the vote, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely, I apologize.
You know, I, I didn't like the decision either last month, but I felt good about the decision we made, when after that meeting was over, I had folks that were in the audience, TAs, come up and thanked me for doing what we did. And that, to me, you know, that, that says something. This decision that we, I'm sorry, but this is not something I can just sit here and say, because I have a lot of questions. And this has sort of been dumped on us, and we didn't know about. So, to me, no, us just making a, a quick decision like this is not, I, I could not do this right now, and it's not because I do not value teacher assistance, trust me. I do more than most, because my children are in with them every day. But this, this just doesn't feel right.
I'm gonna say one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. There is no one in this county that thinks teacher assistants are at the bottom of the, of the scale, or however you phrase that, Paul, nobody thinks that. I don't know anybody in the state, I can't speak for them, but there is no one here. If there was a way that we could have done this, I think it would have been done. I think the teacher assistants had input in this decision, they realized it was a difficult decision, and I certainly agree with Wendy, I've had many come up to me, say, "Thank you for making this difficult decision." There are teacher assistants in Iredale County, our neighboring county, that do not have a job at all. And we, we came up with a very good compromise, that I, not, not at all what we wanted to do, but it was the best what we had. And I, I agree, I don't have any, we're near enough information to make, to vote for this motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All opposed. The motion fails. We have a budget resolution on the floor, I need a motion to adopt that resolution. We have a motion to adopt that resolution, do I have a second? We have a second, Ms. Owens. Do we have any discussion about this budget resolution at this point? No discussion. I will call everyone in favor, if you would signify by raising your hand. Five. All opposed to two. Thank you. At this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson for the public address to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Foul, ladies and gentlemen, we're delighted that you're here with us in this very exciting time of year for the. Davie County Schools, the first few weeks of school. And we have three speakers who've signed up tonight. When I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, the first person, the second person will be on deck, as we say, and ready to go. And it, when you approach the podium, if you'll give us your name and address, that way we can contact you, if we have some follow-up questions, or need some additional information, or want to contact you for any reason. And if you'll keep in mind that we have a five-minute limit, it will be nearly impossible not to see our timer, which is right in front of you, and very large in its current constitution. And when the timer's out, please don't make us call you down, please end your remarks before we get there, if you could. And please refrain from discussing individual student or personnel issues, public comments, not the time for those issues. We do want to hear from you if you have concerns about those things, and if you do, would you please bring them to the attention of Mr. Wallace, who is sitting at the end in the Carolina sky-blue tie? Boldly, I might add. He's available to hear from you on those issues, and he'd be happy to talk to you. So, if we could start, please, with Mr. Mace, and then followed by Mr. Coles.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Bunnies, 1467 program. Mr. Chairman.
Lord, Dr. Harkness, the education process should start with the Board of Education, then the superintendent, and on down to the teachers and teacher assistants. The latter two, teachers and teacher assistants, are the ones on the front line to pass along your curriculum to the children. If this is true, then our teachers and TAs are very important to our kids and their educations. Excuse me, why then would you, the Board of Education, not work hard to find the available dollars to fund our teacher assistants, how appropriate? But instead, you want us to believe you can and will give the commissioners $2 million if the new high school bond for $56 million is passed. Where is this new school money, and where will it come from? If you truly care about the education of our kids, find the money to fully fund our teacher assistants, and forget about a new high school. Thank you.
Our next speaker was Mr. Coles, followed by Rachel Helm.
Dr. Coles from Mox, Farmington in Moxville. I stand here tonight to endorse the teacher assistants, and make sure that, in fact, we even choose to have more of them, especially to teach reading in our early grades. The North Carolina General Assembly cut the overall teacher assistant numbers in a policy change, which reduced funding by 120 million. Everybody knew this was coming down the pike in the spring, and we certainly knew in June, and it was finalized in July. According to the state DPI, this is approximately 3,850 teacher assistant positions being reduced statewide, an average of 31,000 pay compensation, including hours and benefits. The Board of Education was given these two options, which I believe were false choices. To reduce the investment in TAs, option one was to terminate 18 full-time TAs who work eight-hour days. Eighteen full-time TAs at 31,000 is $561,000. This is $88,000 more than the $473,000 recommended, the reduction in the state allotment for teacher assistants. Option two, reduce the hours for a hall, all 174 TAs in Davie County, by cutting all a total of eight days for the year, and then cutting the 112 full-time, eight-hour-day workers, who work a 40-hour week, reducing that to 30-hour week. This is the 25% cut for the lowest-paid staff in the county. This is not any kind of social, social justice. The total hours cut is 56,000. At a minimum, again, no benefits were cut, total hours cut 56,000 at a minimum of $11.25 an hour, this is 635,760, which is 162,500 more money saved on the backs of the TAs. So, when the Board of Education chose option two, to say, they saved even more money from the loss of teacher assistants. But why should our Davie School Board even follow the state's policy change? If we really believe that TAs are essential to the classroom experience, if we choose to preserve the integrity of the classroom, the Board of Education has additional options. One, the Board has 1.8 million available in their fund balance, this is stashed away by their own policy, as a policy they can easily change. Two, the school board can ask the county commissioners for a one-cent tax increase dedicated to the TAs. That's not hard, the county would approve, I'm sure. The Board can ask the county commissioners for 473,000 from the county's own fund balance. Now, if you can't ask for more money from our county, then you need to be more flexible from these other pots of money that we hear about. One year ago, the State Department of Public Instruction results for third-grade reading, end-of-grade testing for three of our elementary schools was below the state average, one year ago. We don't know what it was last year, the data will come out, and we'll look at it again this fall. Those schools absolutely need more TAs for supporting, to support passing grades in basic reading. For the children, if you choose to cut essential staff, what are you doing? Why are we cutting people where the hurt is in order to think about a new high school? As the money dries up, it's time for Plan B on renovating our excellent high school. In my opinion, as a medical doctor who raised two boys, a family doctor who delivered 200 children, we all grew up from kindergarten to high school, and there's nothing more important than funding the staff that make sure our children can read not just average, above average, we want to exceed the standards for reading in our Davie County schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Rachel Helm, to be followed by Mr. Keister.
I'm Rachel Helm from Moxville, and I'd like to compliment my husband on what a great talk he gave. I'm gonna talk about the teachers' assistance as well, and money, and the crummy position that the TAs are in for no good reason. Please remember these numbers, 668,000 and $473,000, this is my whiteboard. In last year's budget address to the Davie County Commissioners, our superintendent said approximately $2.2 million had to be returned to the state by the DC schools. It turned out that the final actual amount we had to return, according to the State Department of Public Instruction DPI, was approximately 1.6 million. There is a difference of $668,000. This turns out to be an unbudgeted bonus, a bonus, an increase for Davie Schools of $668,000. Please note, there was no amendment to the school budget to account for this 668,000. For the citizens, the parents, the children of Davie County, I ask you, the Board, and the superintendent, what did you do with this additional unexpected money? And did you, you did not request less dollars from the local taxpayer, there was no press release, if you spent the 668,000, what was it spent on? If you didn't spend it last year, are you going to spend it this year? And for what? We all heard at the last meeting, again, this is a repeat, that the TAs were going to be cut by $473,000 this year. We have an extra $668,000 that came back, so to speak, from the state. The powers that be could have had the foresight to have planned and funded the TAs completely, the TAs who are so important in the classroom, who are there for the kids, who don't get it right away, for the helping out with the kids, what they're reading and their math. We've all talked about how important they are, the TAs who are the lowest-paid staff in the school system. Let's cut their pay. But who pays the most because of decision failures at the top? Who pays the most? The children.
Our final speaker tonight is Mr. Keister.
My name is Ron Keister, I live here in Moxville, right on, by downtown. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but the discussion brought up some technical issues. I'm a technocrat, if you want to call me, I'm a retired CPA, I deal. I deal with technical issues like Jill does. The statements that were made about the stabilization funds, that's the technical term for the 17%, is accurate. Stabilization funds were defined by the Government Financial Officers Association and adopted by the Government Accounting Standards Board, which is the accounting rules-making for all government agencies. The county has a stabilization fund. Their stabilization fund includes appropriations to the Board of Education. It's 22%. That's 2.2 million, and they have policies there. I don't know what they are, but the policy recommendation by the Government Financial Officers Association says it can be used, they recommend you consider the following things. The Board of Education did not pick up all of these. They said it could only be used for one thing. That's fine. That's your decision. So in order to use that money, you would have to do what y'all said, change a policy. However, the county's got 2.2 million sitting out there. I don't know the rules behind their use of this, but it's for you. It's your emergency fund, called a stabilization fund. Why not go talk to them? That may be a solution, that you don't have to change your policy, you don't have to worry about anything else. You get that? They may have a way to reestablish theirs. But at least go talk to them. I don't know if that's the answer, but I'm just making a suggestion, because I, like everybody else, would like to have all these teachers' assistance.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes your speakers for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. At this point in the meeting, we come to our committee and staff reports, and up first is Erin Foyle.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you some of the numbers that we have in accountability and student information here at the beginning of the school year. First, we're going to talk about several different things tonight, but first, we're going to talk about enrollment numbers for this year. Friday was Day Five. Our students had been in school for five days, and we're starting to see some stabilization in our numbers. So on Day Five, here's a comparison of last year's Day Five and of this year's Day Five. If I can point out a couple of things, you'll notice the effects of redistricting on these numbers. So you'll see Moxville Elementary, one of our goals was to reduce the enrollment there. We have reduced the enrollment there as of Friday at about 12%, 12 and 1/2%. You see Pine Brook went down slightly, and William R. Davie is up 8 and 1/2% or so. If you look down at the bottom, you see more of an overall view, and so you see grades K through 5 are down just a little bit, grades 6 through 8 are almost exactly the same, and grades 9 through 12 are exactly the same, as we were on Day Five of last year, for a total difference of almost negative 1%, negative .8%. Usually, in September, I would be standing up here, and I would be talking to you also about our accountability model, and what we did last year on our state test and our standardized test, and how we looked. This year, I'm not standing in front of you doing that. I'm standing in front of you telling you where the scores are. So currently, our scores are up at DPI. They have to be approved by the State Board of Education, and the question is, is why is this year different than other years? This past year, we implemented a new curriculum. With that comes new tests, and with new tests comes new standards. So all summer long, they've had teachers at DPI, they have been looking at what the curriculum says, they have been looking at what our students should be able to do after spending time with the curriculum. That's called standard-setting, and it's not what the students are doing right now. It's what they should be doing, according to this curriculum. So they have been doing that this summer. In this September board meeting, they are actually approving some of those standards. They'll be working over the next month, getting all the information together, and then the actual accountability results will be approved at the October meeting. So in our November meeting, I will be bringing you the results, since our October meeting occurs before the State Board of Education's meeting. The last thing I want to talk to you about tonight is our cohort graduation rate. The state has published these figures. These are out, and the cohort graduation rate tracks every student from the time they enter grade nine until they graduate from high school. So that's whether they start in North Carolina or they transfer in from outside of North Carolina. So there's a long, arduous process that we go through to track every student and make sure every student is accounted for that entered our schools at any point in time over the past four years. And at the end, we come out with the cohort graduation rate. So the four-year rate is those students that graduate in four years. You'll see that Davie County's graduation rate held steady at 83.2%. It's the same that we had last year, and the North Carolina rate was 82.5%. We also publish a five-year rate, which you'll see here is 85.3%. Now, I want to point out that this is, it looks like we jumped quite a bit from 2011 to 2012, but what you want to keep in mind is that it's the year prior's four-year rate that you want to go up from. So the year prior, last year, 2011 and 12, we graduated 83.2%. And then given one more year, we graduated 85.3%. So that's a great thing, that we keep working on those students even after the four years have passed. Dr. Hartness, did you have remarks that you wanted to make at this point in time?
No, I mean, I just think it's significant that we've held our graduation rate. That's not good enough. The four-year rate is what most people are looking at. We'd like to see a minimum of a 2% increase in that rate every year, according to our strategic plan.
Thank you. Those are the numbers that I have for you tonight. Are there any questions about those?
Do you have any questions? No questions. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, too, as far as the enrollment numbers, that just gives you a snapshot of Day Five compared to Day Five last year. That's not our official enrollment for this year. We won't know that for several more weeks. That kind of gives you a snapshot, and we're pretty close to where we were last year, and very close to what we expected. I would also say that when you look at those numbers, you can see that our redistricting plan was effective. We alleviated overcrowding at Moxville Elementary School. We increased enrollment at William R. Davie, and that's what the Board had as a goal, that's what our committee had as a goal, and those goals were accomplished, so I feel pretty good about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hartness, I don't want to throw something at you, but you just said something. Is the enrollment as of Day Five, this report, is that, how far out of line was that for pre, at the end of the year last year, what you expected to start this year with?
You would never compare Day Five to the end of the year last year. You always compare it to Day Five of the year before. So, you know, every month is different, and we've got the principal's monthly report posted on our website, so you can go back and look at any month. This is where we anticipated we would be.
Thank you. At this point, we've come to the part of the meeting for board comment, and I think that Ms. Owens is up.
I like being first. I want to say thank you to everyone who came, and I also enjoyed meeting all of the businesses and community leaders who worked with our schools to help start our schools off to a great, great start, and to the students who spent their summers learning. If you recall, the last thing I said before we started the summer was that everyone needs to learn something new during the summer, and these students went well, way beyond that. I also want to congratulate our superintendent and the entire staff who worked together to put together the convocation, the school opening ceremony that we had the opportunity to attend. If there's any indication of what the energy that was in that gym that morning, wow, we are just going to have a fantastic year. I cannot tell you what it felt like to stand there and watch everyone, everyone, from the custodians and cafeteria workers, TAs, teachers, teacher assistants, administrators, even parent volunteers who were there. The energy level that was demonstrated there says it all, and I want to congratulate everyone who put that together and everyone who attended. And it will be a great year, this school year in Davie County Schools. Thank you.
I want to thank each one of you for coming out tonight, and it was a short summer. I can't believe this is the fourth year, starting really the fourth year of my being on the school board and the fourth starting of school, but I do, Dr. Hartness said that as long as he'd been doing it, it's as smooth a start as he had seen. Ms. Gill didn't even tell me the other day. It was smooth at Shady Grove. They had an assembly on Friday. I don't know what that meant, but she was tickled over it. But anyway, but, you know, it'll be a tough year, but we need to keep each other in our prayers as we move forward, and again, best of luck for the 2013-14 school year.
Well, it is good to see everybody here, and I am excited about this new school year. I think it's going to be very successful. Appreciate all the staff and all that they do to make that happen. I want to thank our scout troop for being here today, because I heard a wonderful commentary this morning on what an honor it is to pledge allegiance to this country. And I know many of you know there is initiative underway in a state to take the "under God" piece out. That always seems to crop up every now and then, but I'm so thankful that we won't let that happen here in Davie County. So that I wanted to say. I also wanted to say what we just shine, this county just shine, when you see the efforts that the community goes to and the community organizations and the churches and the, all the different groups that came together to support those children with their needs for those backpacks. That is a great thing about our county. So I'm looking forward to a great year, and I'm going to turn it over to Clint.
For one, make one comment. Like Barbara says, I look forward to, which is just my second one, but the service at the high school to kick off the year, and I look forward to it for several reasons, but one of the biggest is similar at our business, whenever we have a Christmas party, whenever all the families, everybody gets together in one place, just like that, it is so humbling to me to know that I am in a position that I'm making decisions that affect a lot of people, not to mention the thousands of family members that are at home for the staff and everything like that. And so it's just, I look forward to it every year for that main purpose of just humbling me for the year. So it's just an honor to be there. People thank me for being there, and that's just a joke for me, for teachers to come up and thank me for being there. It's just, it's an honor to be there, and so just hope to make the right decisions.
I don't think there's much that I can add. I guess one thing I think about tonight, you know, there were a couple of things sprung on us that we didn't anticipate, and I think we could be a much more effective board if we would have the courtesy of letting, I know we can't send out emails and say, "What do you think about this?", but, you know, we do all have phones, and I think it makes a difference, and it's, that's what we need. We have got to talk to each other, because it is too hard to sit here and be able to vote on something when it comes out of left field at you. So I guess that's my only request. I will make a concerted effort to do that, but I just want us to all take that into consideration. Thanks for helping us get off to a great school year. Deborah, I appreciate all you're doing, because I'm not, I couldn't do your job, and you do a great job at it, and I hope that you don't feel like that we doubt your competence. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
And we'll jump in, too, and say, "I love dropping my kids off on school on Friday and seeing all the jeans." And the smiling faces and everything, that was great.
Barbara said she likes going first. I like going last, because I started a checklist of things that I would say, and it says, "Thank you for coming tonight." I already did that one. Financial shortfall, staff still doing business, check that. Recognitions, I've said it before, it's what babies cry for and adults strive for, being recognized for good things that you do, that the hard work prevails in you, and that's great. For all those that received recognition tonight, an extra attaboy and pat on the back for all of those. The countywide volunteer and financial and fiscal support to our school system, again, everybody said that, but you can't understate that. It's incredible what the community puts into bunches of different levels of school stuff and school businesses. Another school year kickoff, we're now in the race to get to the end of this school year and start another one. So thank you to all the staff at all levels in the school system. It was stated earlier tonight, there's no doubt the people on this board have no option but to believe that staff is doing what they need to do to make this thing work. I applaud you all for the things that you do, whether you really like having to do certain things or not, you do it, and you do the best you can with what you've got. I'd like to say thank you to the parents. If you are a parent of a child in this school system, thank you very much for sending them our way. We, speaking from a board position, from the staff, we're going to do everything we can to help those little ones out. And then I was writing some notes a while ago, and I believe this to be true, some of it is evident from comments made tonight, either from up here or out there. There's a lot of errant information out and about. I know that Stephanie has done a lot of work through the public relations programs with the School Matters and newsletters, et cetera, et cetera. Dr. Hartness initiated that with his comments on the monthly It Matters, or School Matters program. I would ask that you do everything you can to come up with accurate information and get it out, that you're willing to accept speaking engagements to explain things to different groups. I 100% admire that, because you're standing up there presenting, but you're also putting yourself in a position where you can get shot, not physically, but, so when you put yourself in a position to have to take on and address issues, I appreciate your willingness to get out there and do that, and that you are doing that. I get phone calls, and today I received a letter that was not marked, couldn't tell who it was from, and the information that it gave me was incorrect information. And there are people that are loading their guns, using it for ammunition, and making a stand for something based on incorrect information. It does not do any good. Just sitting on it would be better than spouting it, to say something wrong and stir the pot further is incorrect. And if I have contributed that in any way, if you're aware of that, please let me know, because I do not want to do that. Stephanie and Dr. Hartness and the other staff, I'm asking you to continue the efforts of educating the public on correct information and help pull everything together so that what is being presented is accurate and correct, and let people make up their minds based on correct information. I am one of the board members, maybe the only board members, that brought and dumped, was that your word, dumped unexpected stuff on the school board. I get questions, and I want answers, and that we can't meet as a group without it breaking a law is bad. Clint, you said that, I think. Didn't you say we can't send out emails and communicate? Was that you, or is that Wendy? I wish we could talk and kind of like let our, this is bad, let our hair down, that we could talk and share information without it being something official that people could call us out on. There is lots of things that come that have to be decided, and with the information that you're given, you make a decision as best you can, and then when new information shows up, you start to think, well, that may not have been the very best decision that we could have made, now we know this. But at the time that the decision was made or the policy was written, it may have been But at the time that the decision was made or the policy was written, it may have been the very best thing at that time. I am rambling. I am done. Good night.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Hartness and everyone that has a part in school matters for putting out the facts. I appreciate you doing that. And to everyone that, and this includes everyone from central office down, that helped make hard decisions, that helped collect the information to make the hard decisions. And I appreciate that. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's good to see a packed house. And I know that Dr. Hartness and I talk quite a bit, and that's initiated mostly by me calling him. And I think we all have his phone number, so we can pick up the phone and call him and talk to him about issues that we have. But otherwise, I think that's it. And if I have a motion to adjourn, I have a motion from Mr. Drexler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Ridenhour. All in favor? Thank you.